Okay, I'll call this special meeting of city council to order at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, October the 17th. This is a workshop which we've had on the radar for awhile. We have a number of those throughout the year. Please make sure your cellphones are off out there, I know I did. And we will, at this point, consider item number one, which is the water and wastewater update, and I will immediately turn it over to staff for our workshop.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the next in the series of your workshops that we have on a monthly basis. Big, big topic, as you can tell from your notebook, and apologize for all of the information, but we wanted to make sure that we provided a lot of backup for the items that we're going to discuss today, because in the two hours that we have, we just won't be able to get into a whole lot of detail, but we'll do as much as we can, and we'll certainly answer any questions that you have. Perhaps today, we might want to proceed a little bit differently than we have in the past, and that is, since it's a lengthy presentation, make sure we get through all that, and then save your questions to the end, would that be okay? Or would you all rather question while you've got it on your mind? Or, I'm guessing some of you all already made your notes, and you can come back to those? Because I think perhaps there's going to be, verbally, he's going to cover a lot of territory that's not even in the slides, and maybe your question's going to be answered if we get through the whole presentation. I do want to also just recognize a few guests that we have in the room. We've got Ray with the River Authority, and I understand you're with Headwaters, we haven't met, but thanks for, okay, thanks for being here. And Commissioner Moser with Kerr County, so thank you all for being with us. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Stuart Barron, who will lead us through the presentation. Stuart?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Today, we're going to give a brief overview of a lot of water topics, so like Mr. McDaniel said, we'll answer the questions there towards the end, or as they come along throughout the presentation, but this is probably a 30,000-foot look at some of these topics, and we'll drill down to them as necessary towards the end. So we'll start with the four sources of water, what I consider the four sources of water for the city of Kerrville, our raw water supply. Right now, we have surface water, which is in two components, run of the river, and that's also stored surface water. We have a groundwater component, an ASR component, and sometime in the future, we may have reuse water as a source of water, raw water for the city. Surface water, let me talk a little bit first about stored surface water. We have our own, we have stored surface water in Nimitz Lake, it's in a lake behind Chili's, that belongs to the city of Kerrville. The water that's in that lake, there's about 735 acre-feet of water in there. We're able to use that water at our need, whenever we need it, it's impounded, we own it. The one caveat to that is we have to allow the flow of the river that comes into the lake to go out of the lake. So if we have 50 CFS coming in, we have to allow 50 CFS to come out. Other than that, the impounded water is ours to use on the annual basis. So the run of the river is the next component of surface water, right? And that's that water that was coming into the lake, the 50 CFS, and the water's going out the 50 CFS. That's considered run of the river. We do have water rights, most of our water rights are run of the river, but they are allocated on the, by the state of Texas, and they're in the first in time, is the first in right. I'll use an example of, maybe EA and I have lots of water rights from the state, are allocated for the water. In the, say, 1920, EA petitioned the state for a water right, and I was a little slower, and I got mine in 1921. He has the right to pull his water first before I have the right to pull my water. That's the first in time and the first in right. And that's the baseline premise that the state allocates the water on. What's an exception of that is the riparian zone, the riparian and the domestic and livestock. The riparian right is the people that own the land along the sides of the river, they have the right to use some of the water that comes out of it, along with domestic and livestock. You can water your livestock out of the river, and you can also use it for your home use and around your home, certain acreage, or not a certain acreage, but an area around your home. Those are the exceptions to the first and right. Those are more senior than anybody that has a paper water right, if you're living on the river. So that, those are the, those are the two that don't follow the first and right first, or the first in time, the first and right premise. So who enforces those rights? It's the Texas Water Master. They come in and they'll, if EA wanted his water, and there's no water in the river, he calls the Water Master and says, "Mr. Water Master, I have a 1920's water right, there's no water in the river, is there anything you can do to help me? There's somebody else's apparently pulling out before mine, and I'd like for you to call them and tell them to quit pulling water out so I can have my water right." So the Water Master is the state agency that handles that for him, for the, for the state, and also for the individuals. There's two big water right holders on the Guadalupe River, the Blanco, Guadalupe Blanco River Authority, and then also Dow Chemical. Dow Chemical, as far as I know, does not do any subordination agreements with their rights. They hold their rights themselves, and they use them accordingly. The Blanco River Authority, however, does, does two types of subordination agreements with their water rights. They started, some of their older rights are even in the late 1800s, I believe, 1890s. They had hydroelectric rights down around Gonzales, and they have the right to use the water that's flowing in the river to make electricity. It's not a consumptive right, but they need that flowing water to make electricity. Well, as municipalities and other things came along, and the Blanco GBRAs, I'll call them, said, "Well, we'll subordinate to you. We'll give you our 1894 right, we won't call on it. We won't call the Water Master and say, 'We need our water. We'll be subordinate to you, EA. You can use yours first, and we'll stand down, and we won't use our water right.'" And the Water Master recognizes that, those agreements. Well, somewhere around 2000, 2010, they've changed their, that subordination agreement to an upstream diversion contract. Different terminology, a lot different contract with them. It's more of an ironclad contract, it's more of a take or pay. You use the water, you can, you can use it, or you don't have to, but you're going to pay for it either way, but you have an upstream diversion contract. That is subordinated through the Canyon Lake rights. They have a whole bunch of water within Canyon Lake, and that's about a 1950. They started Canyon Lake, they started getting the water rights for Canyon Lake in about 1954, is what they, is what it looks like on the paper. They didn't, obviously didn't build the lake for a little while, they started shortly after that. But the 1950s is what the, is the drought of record, and it's the impetus for all of the water rights in the air, or not the water rights, but the, but the need, the baseline for how much water are we going to have during a drought. It's the 1950s drought. So at that time, GBRAs went to the state, along with a lot of, similar to a lot of river authorities, and said, "We need to build a big reservoir." They built Canyon Lake, so in the past 1950 is going to be more junior than the, than GBRAs water right, and therefore, they can call on it unless you have this upstream diversion contract with them. Yes, ma'am?
Are there a lot of upstream diversion contracts?
Yes. More so on the pooling of Canyon Lake than upstream diversion contracts, because they, essentially, they're selling water out of their, out of their lake. An upstream diversion is a similar thing, it's just you don't have to wait till it makes it to the lake, you can get it upstream with them. So on paper, this is what our water, like, our water rights look like, and I call them on, these are what I consider on paper, because as we talk in a little while, we, we have a lot more paper water rights than we have wet water in the river. So, the first one is a very old right, it's a 1914 right, and it's basically, if there's water in the river, we're able to pull it out. Unfortunately, it's just a small right, it's about 225 acre-feet, but it's very firm. The next one is 1977, that's permit 3505. It's not, it's after 1950, and so Canyon Lake has the authority to fill up and use all their water before we have the, before we have the seniority to use all of that water right, along with 19, or 5394 and 2026 are all junior to Canyon Lake. So, we've never had GBRAs call us and, and demand that they, that we send our water to the lake, but that is something that is within their ability to do. The line, the water rights that are under the gray outline are two that we've, that we've given back to the state of Texas. One was donated to us by Jim Hayes, and the other one is a golf course impoundment lake, or an impoundment on the golf course. We gave both of those back, because they were, by the time we moved them to our water treatment plant, there was just no water left in the rights, from having to, losing it to the environment and people along the way. The fourth, the third one down is UGRAs, it's our sister right to the 5394, and then there's also another right, I have it listed under authorized diversion, but it has not been authorized yet. You can see the priority date has not been set, nor the water right number. It's a 6,000 acre-feet memorandum of understanding between the county and GBRAs, and they have an agreement between themselves, saying they'll work together to secure the county's 6,000 acre-feet of water. As far as I know recently, that has not, that has not produced a water right, but it could. So we'll go on to groundwater. Any questions about surface water? Anybody? Okay. Groundwater's a whole, it's a whole different, a whole different animal. The state subscribes to what they call the rule of capture. The principle of the rule of capture is you have the right to capture the groundwater as it flows under your property. Really broad rule. And it doesn't, that's, that's, that's the state rules. They're able to drill down and say, "Okay, well, we've had some people kind of step on that rule, if you will, and use too much groundwater," so they started up the groundwater districts. And they said, "Okay, groundwater districts, you're going to have the right to tell people how much they get to use. We've established that they have the right to use the water, but, but the local entities are going to be the ones to tell them how much water they can use." So our groundwater district is called Headwaters Groundwater Conservation District, and they use three different methodologies to determine how much groundwater you should be eligible for. So you have the historical use, obviously, the groundwater district, there was people using water long before the groundwater district was here. And so if they had a meter on their well, the groundwater district would take that into account, and they'd say, "Okay, this is how much water you've been using the last 10 or 15 years. We'll, we'll give you this allotment within reason, but this is, this is now what you're permitted at." Another method they use is the surface acres. If you have a, if you have one acre of land, is the way that it's set up, you get 80,000 gallons of water a year. So if you get two acres, you've got 160,000. Now, that's the maximum. If you, if you need less than that, they will, will permit you for less, but that is the maximum that they'll, they'll allow you to take per acre. And then we have the, something called the conjunctive use right, and this is fairly new, I mean, in water terms, it's new, it's probably been around for five to eight years now. This is what the city of Kerrville uses. Since we are the only user that I am aware of, that Headwaters has, that's a conjunctive use, which uses surface water and groundwater, they've gone in and said, "Well, if, if, excuse me, if you use surface water, what we'll do is we'll take the five-year history of how much surface water you've used, and then we'll divide that by five, and we'll give you that as your groundwater right." That prevents the city from having to drill, or to pump all the groundwater that we need to establish either the historical use, and it gets us away from the 80,000 gallons per acre allotment. It allows us to have enough water during a, during a drought, that we're able to keep our citizens in water during that time without using surface water. We would have to be up into the drought stages a little bit, but we would be able to supply most, most all of our citizens with groundwater during that time. Here is a copy of the conjunct, of our groundwater permit. You can see on this permit that we have about 1.4 billion gallons of water a year. It also has the wells that are, that are on there, all of our wells. ASR 1 and 2 are also listed on here. The caveat with ASR 1 and 2 is we have to use all of our ASR water prior to pumping groundwater out of that hole. That's just a Headwaters rule, that's an agreement that we made with Headwaters. Yes, ma'am?
Was the 20% just an example, or is that the fact?
The 20%.
When you were talking about conjunctive use. The example was that...
We did a five-year average, is that the 20% that you...
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's the rule.
That's the rule. That's not just a random example you...
No, that's, that's five, they, they could take, matter of fact, you'll see on the next page, our groundwater permit comes up for renewal in 2018, and so I've talked to Gene about it. Matter of fact, yesterday, we were talking about this presentation, I said, "Well, I guess we need to look at that and get started." He said, "Yeah, just send us the last five years, and we'll get you a new number, and we'll move forward with that." So it is, that's their rule, five-year average. So with the rule of capture being in place, the city's never overturned the rule of capture, so our residents have a right to drill a groundwater well on their property. We haven't, we have never prevented them from doing that. However, we do make some, we have a set of rules in place, that says if you're going to drill a groundwater well, you have to have a groundwater permit from Headwaters, follow all of their rules, which they, they don't have a whole bunch of them, but they do have a few. You have to drill it to drinking water standards, TCQ drinking water standards, must be tested to verify there's no contaminants, and then the, the private property, if you have your own well, it has to be protected from our drinking water supply by a pressure-reducing zone, which is an RPZ. It's an unknown source of water, and we don't know what you're doing with that water on your private property, or what kind, what kind of treatment it's gone through. We're fairly certain it doesn't have any chlorine in it, and we do not want it in our system, so it has to be separated from the city's system, one way or another, and it's typically done with the, either an air gap or an RPZ. That bring, that's the groundwater component. Any questions about groundwater? So as we stack that together, now we look at what the city kind of owns in the, or has in the, yeah, EA will pass this out for you, I'm sorry, this didn't make it into the, into the presentation, but we'll talk a little bit about our, our water supply, and how they stack up against one another. So what we've tried to do here on, on one slide is show you how much groundwater we have stacked on top of surface water, stacked with ASR water. So on the far right-hand side of the graph, where it says 2016, that's last year's numbers, you'll see our annual demand there. Depending on what paper you have, the green one is on the slide, I think it's a lighter blue, kind of an aqua blue on the, on your sheet. That, the bottom piece is groundwater, the next piece up is the surface water, and then the dark blue on top is ASR. So you can see, on a normal year, like 2016, our demand just barely exceeded our groundwater allotment. So we needed, we had to pump a little bit of surface water to, to supply all of our customers. And so we're, we're only about a third of our water on paper are we using in a 2016 scenario. If you look at the other side of the graph, in 2011, you see a lot different story. What that represents is, you can see that the, that the groundwater line has, has come down a little bit, it goes down about 20%. That is the, that is the reduction in production that Headwaters requested in 2011. As they, they requested everybody on a groundwater well try to cut back 20% of their usage. So that represents the decline in groundwater. You also see a significant volume decrease in our surface water rights. During the drought, we had the Water Master call us at different times throughout the drought, and curtail us to different volumes. This is kind of the worst-case scenario, and that one time, we were down to 500,000 gallons a day. So that, what you see here in 2011 is the 500,000 gallons a day allotment of surface water. They could come in and tell us, "No more water." As you saw on the graph, the first in time is the first in right. If GBRAs, or someone like, in that example of EA owning a 1920's right, they came in and said, "We want, you know, we need our water." The Water Master was within their rights to tell the city, "You can't pump any of the, you can't pump any of your more senior rights."
Can I ask a quick question? So if we'd had this graph run further back, that would have been a dip because of the drought, it would have been back up?
It would have come back up, yes, sir.
Okay.
And then, and if you go far enough back, you would have, you would have seen another one in '09.
All right.
And depending on what the Water Master does, and we talked about putting those in, but the Water Master, there's no way to really predict what he's doing, he does, because he responds to calls. So I kind of put the worst-case scenario in '11, just so we'd have a, have an opportunity to talk that through.
And Stuart, the graph makes it look like we, we use up our groundwater first, really, we use up our surface water first, right?
That's right. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, maybe I should have flip-flopped those two, but, but in any event, we use up our, and like Mary Ellen said, we have an agreement with Headwaters that says we're going to use our surface water first, to the tune of about 85 to 90% of all, of any given year, we're using surface water, and then we use groundwater, and we make up with ASR as, as needed. But you can tell on the 2011, there's a little bit of ASR water that has to be used there to make that work. If you would assume that that drought went two years or three years, or if it was a 10-year drought, you can, you can imagine what our groundwater, or what our ASR quantity would be, and also the reduction in flow in groundwater. This is, this is, once again, water on paper, this isn't necessarily the wet stuff that's available out there. So our ASR is a good source of water, but we don't know how long it'll last, it all depends about drought, and how long, how long we think it's, how long we think it's going to last. If we would have not been in stage, did we make it stage four, Scott? You remember? I thought it was in stage three.
Stage three, we had four stages right then.
Four, okay. So we changed our stages. If we would have not been ratcheted up to a high level of drought contingency, that demand line would have been a lot higher. And so we, we are trying, anytime we're in a drought, we're trying to offset demand with supply, and we're trying to make it last just as long as it can, because we have no idea how long that drought's going to last.
If you looked, if I could ask a question, if you looked at the seven-year drought that was from '50 to '57, and you looked at that scenario, what would that tell you?
Well, there's, that drought, like all droughts, has wet years and dry years within it. Some of the, some of the worst-case year of, of the 50's drought was exceeded by the late 2000s, and I don't know if it was, if it was '09, or if it was '11. You have to kind of compare them up, and you have to figure out how big a scope you want to look at, and dial all that into what, what your use is. And then you throw in a whole bunch of unknowns of what's the groundwater going to, district going to do, if they're going to, how far they're going to pull you back, and then now you have a higher demand by citizens, a lot more people living here than were in the 50s.
Right.
And then you have a Water Master to deal with, that you didn't have in the 50s. So there's a lot of variables, and as you try to put all that on a sheet of paper, it gets really confusing and hard to, hard to project. But there were years in, in the 2000s that were worse than any, or there was month, there was a, there was a window of months in there, that was almost a year long, that was worse than any of the 50-year period.
Stuart, does that help me to, I have that rainfall data?
Have a rainfall data? It's just an informational kind of history of where the, how much rain we've had, and kind of where the drought looked, what it looks like over the drought periods. Sorry, I don't have a slide for it, but I imagine EA might have an extra one that he can, he can share.
I've seen that before.
There again, that's just the rainfall totals by year, and kind of gives you some of the history on the, gives you a little bit of the histories on when the 50s, if you look at 54, let's see if I can line all this up. So around about 54 is, is the significant time, there was a period in there from 54 to 56, that was a very bad period, and then if you scoot on over to 2011, it's drier than any of the 50's years. But luckily, you don't have the consecutive year after year, there was a couple wetter years in 2010 and 2009, that almost were up to average. So definitely not a, a whole lot of water, but it, but it brings your average up. And then 2012 and 13 were also, and 14, fairly significant dry years. Okay. Any questions about that? Okay, we'll talk about the city of Kerrville's master plans. I have brought the three master plans that we have, and they're here on the end of the table, and we can get into those after the meeting, if you'd like, if you have some specific questions about projects. Yes, ma'am?
I just had one quick, I know we said we'd save it, but back on the Headwaters, when you have the maximum surface acres times 80,000, you said that's the max. Who sets that policy? Headwaters, state?
Yes, ma'am. The Headwaters set it.
How often do they review that?
Annually.
Okay. And it's changed. It had, it was different numbers when I served on that board, and we changed it during the time I was on that board. We're always monitoring the aquifers. There are 30-plus wells that we check every month. So if we see those trending downward, we say, "Uh-oh, we gotta, we gotta..." On new permits and on renewal permits, we gotta cut back a little bit. And sometime that might be, at a later date, interesting to see how that's changed. That's a separate topic.
Okay. And those are per aquifer, which is an interesting point.
Yeah, it also depends on which aquifer. When I was on the board, we had a different amount for the middle and the lower. Right, sure.
Okay. So the master plans, give you a little history, or a little insight as to how the master plans work. It's, it's not a true roadmap of, you must follow this direction to get to this end product. It's an idea, it's a process. What we've done is, is developed these plans to say, especially in 2008, that we anticipate the city to grow at this rate, and we anticipate the city to grow in these directions, and kind of bring in these subdivisions. And so we, we build to those, those projections, or what we think's going to happen. So it's not a, it's not a mandatory process of, this is where the line's going to go, this is what size it needs to be, and this is what the development it is it's going to serve. It's an idea, and it's, it's a benefit to the city to, to understand, this is the direction that we need to go. And if you look at, at these sheets, down to, from the CIP, from 2008 to 2012, you'll see that most of those projects were done. That was when the master plan was new, and we knew, we were, it was, it was close, it was near and dear to our, our heart, we knew exactly what needed to be done. And as you move out to 2013 to 2017, some of those projects haven't been done yet, because they weren't as, they weren't a real priority at the time that the plan was done. We'll walk through a couple of the 2008 projects there, the Texas Water Loop. It goes over by the state hospital, I won't bore you all with every one of them, but we'll go through a few of these. The water treatment plan improvement, that is a clearwell expansion at the water treatment plant, that was, has not been done. We didn't, it was a 3 million gallon clearwell, and we decided there were some other needs that were more important than that clearwell, and so we didn't, we haven't done it yet. We do have the plans, it's ready to be built, I didn't have to touch up the plans a bit, but it's not built yet. Stadium pump extension, that's a pump at the stadium tank sites. River Hills expansion and water line, that's the 16-inch water line that comes from the plant to the River Hills golf ball. It has been complete. 12-inch water line from Etta View well, that has not been, neither one of those two have been complete, the 12-inch river crossing. However, the 12-inch river crossing, we're going to consider a partial completion, because it was cited to go across the river somewhere around Comanche Trace, out that way, towards that, to help serve Comanche Trace. Well, and as part of this reuse project, we've, we've built water lines across the river, and now we have some redundancy up by the park, and so we're taking credit for that 12-inch water line, but instead of it being at Comanche Trace, it's going to be at, um, close to, um, Shriners Park now.
Okay, but a question about that, because I had it on the next page, I don't know about that. That's a freshwater, that's potable water.
Yes, ma'am.
We're talking, and so it's being done, it says it's under construction?
Yes, as part of the reuse project. It's the, it's the pipe crossing that goes on that elevated structure down by the, the old Legion Crossing, right next to 534.
So there is right now simultaneously an effluent line and a potable line going in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, did we know that?
Yeah, it's part of the plans, because the idea was that we were going to abandon the old bridge, which had the pipes on it, so that those pipes had to be put somewhere, and that they would be put on the scaffolding along with the reused pipe.
Okay. That was, that was curious to me when I saw that.
It's not a very long section, it's just a piece right there.
It's just the river crossing, we didn't do, we haven't, we haven't built back into the, into the network, really, if you will, but making it across the river is a, is a huge feat, and why we were crossing the river with the reuse line, it turned out to be a good, good opportunity to do that. And while we were crossing the river with the reuse line, it, it turned out to be a good, good opportunity to do that.
Now, the, the, the water line that runs on the concrete, um, footbridge kind of?
Yes, ma'am.
That's still gonna be in use?
It's in use right now. Uh, when this twelve-inch water line comes on, online, then that one will be obsolete, and none of, none of those two pipes will be needed on the, on the Legion crossing.
Okay.
Okay. Um, lowest pump station expansion, um, that's the pump station behind Walmart. It has not been expanded yet. Um, partially because we drilled Methodist encampment well. It's up now where, where that pump station would have been pumping to. So when we need water, we turn on that well. You know, we've, uh, we don't need the pump station expansion. Tw- sixteen-by-twelve-by-ten Comanche Trace line, um, some of these improvements have been done. We may have to go through the, through the project to tell you exactly which one. Some of them have been changed a little bit. The one-point-one-million-gallon Ridgewood East tank, that's the elevated tank out at Comanche, or at River Hills that serves Comanche Trace. Twelve-inch water line to Ridgewood, obviously that's been done to serve the tank. Holdsworth tw- Holdsworth Drive water line has been completed. Kerrville North water improvement, um, I have to go back and look and find out exactly what that one was. Um, twelve-inch Harper Road utility extension, that is out to James Avery. Keystone Hydronneumatic Plant has been upgraded, and then we'll talk about the wastewater side. The new Burke Dale lift station has been built. Um, G Street interceptor, twenty-four to twenty-seven inch inter- um, interceptor, that is to bypass Legion, or excuse me, to G Street. And then the next one is demolished, the G Street lift station. We have done that. And that is the, 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 the big line that was put on the far side of the river to, to Burke Dale. Um, it allowed us to abandon G Street. Direct Broadway re- redirect Broadway Force Main. Broadway is by Best Auto Parts. We redirected it to go back across the river and pump into, into, um. Or no, we didn't. Um, that, it's, it's by Best Auto Parts, but we undersized the Force Main because the pumps were too big. Once we took all the load off of it. Um, that went, that is going to Burke Dale now. The pumps were too big. They cycled too often, and so we made the Force Main a little bit smaller. And it, it pumps to Legion, um, kind of where Shriner University meets West Main.
Is the H Street development gonna be served off that? Is that gonna change anything?
Is which one?
The, uh, H Street development there that's going in behind Best Auto and around it, is that gonna change? That's serviced by that. Is that gonna change your capacity there?
No, that, because there's a, there's some area there that, that we have additional capacity in, and I think we'll be fine with that. It doesn't, there's not a whole bunch of, of new connections in that. In that, um, development.
Stuart, would you, would you answer these real basic questions, but I, I like to be able to visualize. When we talk about an interceptor, we're talking about a pipe, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And when we're talking about a force main, what's the difference between a force main and an ordinary pipe?
The, an, an ordinary sewer pipe is a gravity pipe.
Okay. Force main means there's a pump somewhere along there that's causing that to be under pressure?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And it might, and the pump might be at the lift station?
All, yes, ma'am. All the pumps are at the lift station, so the, typically the way your system is set up is you have a, a network of gravity mains. The gravity flows to a lift station, a low spot. Uh, the low spot pumps that water up over a hill until it can get into another gravity system. And then it flows down the next gravity system till it makes to the next lift station. Um, there's, there's areas in town that the water has to go through four or five lift stations before it gets to the, before it gets to the plant. And that's part of the reason why our system is so expensive.
Field country infrastructure.
Yes, there's twenty-eight lift stations here in Kerrville. Now, luckily, they don't all go through the same stations, but, uh, where did we stop? Do y'all have particular questions or y'all, or you want me to go through each one of them? I'm seeing head and not to both directions. I, I'll.
You might wanna comment on developer-driven.
Okay. Let me, Mary Ellen, did you have a question?
I, I'm, I'm watching the Legion lift station to eleven-point-five million gallons a day, and then in some of our other studies, they're different numbers. So I, I, I just wanna track that as we go along. How big is that lift station really gonna be?
We'll talk, yes, we'll talk more about Legion here in just a few minutes. And Mr. McDaniel, you, you wanted to know about the developer-driven. You'll see on here that we have some, some, some whys as complete and some ends as, as non-complete. And then you see some ends and Ds. And at the, at the, the D stands for a developer-driven project. May or may not, city may or may not participate in it. It'll be up to the, the council at that time as to how much they wanna participate. On the bottom right-hand side of this first page, you see a lot of developer-driven projects. Um, Waters North, um, lift station, Eckert, Bear Creek, um, all of those are developer-driven, and that, those, those projects were going to be for land that is by the water treatment plant, by, kind of by where the Bear Creek Bridge is. Um, and they were going to build lift stations to serve each one of those developments in there to make it into our gravity, or to over the hill by the state hospital into our gravity main. Most of those have not started. We have some interest that's called the Thompson Drive project right now. Um, that's probably would take the place of, I think it's the Bear Creek. And so we're working with the developer to kind of, to kind of do that, um, work through that. So as you can see, as we get down in those further years from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and seventeen, um, a lot of those projects haven't started, or haven't been completed. Not a lot of them, but a, but a fair amount, especially on the wastewater side, mainly because they're developer-driven projects. Yes, uh, what, who wants?
On the water treatment, uh, water project side next to the last, that's what that one, twelve-inch from water treatment plant and expansion, PS expansion.
I will have to look that one up. That one hasn't been done yet, and I don't know which twelve-inch line that is. The, the pump, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the pump station expansion is at the clear well there at the, um, it's additional pumps to handle more water pushing out of the plant. Yes, ma'am.
There's a, there's a kind of a lift station that Shriner is building to make the wastewater work from their new dorm. That wouldn't be on this list, 'cause we didn't plan that ahead, right?
That's right.
That's a developer-driven.
And we'll talk more about that in a, in a, in a few slides. So let's look at the two thousand, so we updated, that was the two thousand and eight master plan, and those are the, a big portion of what we've been, uh, what we worked on from two thousand and eight on up to two thousand and thirteen. Um, and then we, we, we did new plans. Um, now, once, these plans have a twenty-year CIP in them, and so we're really trying to look out in the future and see how far that is. But they really should be touched about every five years, um, five to seven years, depending on how fast your city's growing. If you're growing like crazy, you may even wanna do it more often than that. So on the, on the first column there, we have the two thousand and, and, uh, le- two thousand and fourteen plan. Most of those are water projects. And then you see, um, we did the decomis- decommission of the Spur One Hundred tank, the TTHM removal at the stadium. We, we've actually done that project. Um, and then the Summit tank repainting. Um, we've done all of those. And in two thousand and fifteen, this Stadium One tank paint, um, we did that. We have not painted Stadium Two tank. Uh, we've looked at doing College Cove and, um, also the Summit in- instead. Rehabilitation of plant clarifier, that is actually in, in design right now. Um, so we'll be, we'll be getting ready to build that soon. And then the lowest, lowest tank paint, um, is in design as well, and that has not been completed. Two thousand and twenty out, obviously we haven't done most of those. We haven't got that far in our, in our, um, CIP nor our, our schedule yet. In the two thousand and thirteen, so a- a- as you can tell, we've broken the two master plans into water and wastewater now. Just makes it a little bit more, uh, give a little bit more in-depth study as each one of them, so doing both at the same time. Do either one or both. It doesn't, uh, it's at the city's, city's leisure as to what, how we, how we proceed with those. The two thousand and thirteen was actually the wastewater section of it. They called for the Legion, or excuse me, the Jefferson Lift Station expansion, what has been done. We added a clarifier at the water treatment, wastewater treatment plant. That has been done. The upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant electrical system, complete. Reduced Broadway lift station capacity to five hundred gallons per minute. That goes in tandem with that pump enforcement that I was telling you about earlier, um, to make that smaller. And then the two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and nineteen, some of those that we've done, some of them we haven't. We're actually under design right now for the oxidation ditch to clean out the, the ditch and, um, upgrade the rotors. Um, new Napwell lift station, that has not been complete. Uh, the way that we've, the way that these plans were modeled is we started at the wastewater plant, and we worked backwards into the system. And so typically, you would, you'd have your plant sized accordingly, and then you go to your lift station that's the closest one to the plant, and you make it big enough. And then you go to the next lift station. So we started at the plant, then we built Burke Dale, then we built Jefferson. We're falling back and having to do Legion now, because it's a, it's a maintenance problem and a capacity problem. And then after Legion's done, then we would move to Nap Road, and we're moving towards, um, the far west side of town and, and building out. So we could potentially at some time in the future serve places like Mill Run and places that are on the very far west side of, of Kerrville. So that's the, that's the, 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 the pecking order of, of why we're moving in, in these different directions. So we're building capacity as we go. Um, so that got us down to Nap Road. G Street Lift Station decommission, that was on the previous one as well. Twenty-one interceptor from Jefferson. I think it's downstream of Jefferson behind HEB is the, is that, is that interceptor. And there again, we have some developer-driven projects towards the bottom of that page. Uh, Legion Lift Station is also listed in this plan as, as something that needs to be done. Any questions about, we'll get into some more detail of the projects on the next sheet, but this is an overview. Okay. So the individual projects, uh, we'll start talking about Legion. Legion Lift Station is, uh, when I got here, it was the workhorse of the city. It almost, I would say, two-thirds of our water went through Legion Lift Station, maybe a little bit more. Uh, it was one of two lift stations that pumped to the plant. There actually went, one of three, uh, but it was by far the biggest. And the oldest, and the most, the most difficult to repair. Um, over those periods of year, actually Legion was one of our, was one of our favorites to replace, um, very early on. Uh, it got superseded by Burke Dale, 'cause we couldn't take Legion off, offline fa- long enough to build a lift station. So we built Burke Dale and got a lot of flow over onto Burke Dale, and now we're at a place that Legion is capable of, of, of working with Legion. It'll still be difficult to get offline. Um, but we're able to build capacity in our system, um, with Burke Dale. So Legion Lift Station, well, the, the way it's being designed right now will give us an additional about forty-four percent capacity over what we're at today. We have projects that have, well, the, right now, um, backing into some of the studies, and, and some of the studies are in, in the back of the, of the presentation that I gave you. We have about ninety-five living unit equivalents, um, that can be, that the lift station can handle in addition to what it's pumping right now during a wet weather event. So that's about ninety-five new homes that can go onto that lift station before it, it meets its, its, um, capacity. So limited, projects that have been limited by that is the Shriner University, the Peterson Farm Road. Shriner University had about seven hundred and twenty-six rooms. They're, they didn't really do living unit equivalents, because it's a dorm system. Um, I couldn't find a good relationship between rooms and living room equivalents, 'cause they, they have, uh, there's, there's some other things they're doing on campus as well. I just listed it as rooms. Peterson Farm was two hundred and forty living u- living unit equivalents. Cinderella Ridge was a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten-point-eight. Uh, and East Main was two hundred and forty. All of those projects have come to the city in, in one form or another, and for one reason or another, maybe not just Legion, that have not happened. Legion was a component in each one of those developments, uh, enough of a component that we did some studies. Um, either the city did them or the developers did them, and determined that Legion was going to have an impact on their project. Projects that are in the evaluation phase that we think we can serve still, um, are the Pinto Trail, um, development is gonna be about forty, forty-seven is the last design I saw. Hasn't been approved yet, but that's kind of where they're, the, the, the footprint of the lots that I saw on the last, the last printout. And then also the Spring Street Hotel, um, which that's in the, in its beginning stages, but we'll see how that, how that comes along. We think both, both of those two projects could potentially happen and not put us over the fif- the ninety-five living unit equivalents, but it'd be close. Okay? So we have a thirty percent design estimate at eight-point-three million dollars. That's up from the seven-point-seven million that we thought, um, it was going to be a few months ago, but we're only at the thirty percent design. Um, so we're, we're still working through that and trying to figure out exactly where, where we're at. Um, but the, so the four, what does the forty-four percent capacity translate, translate into in living unit equivalents? It's about twenty-five-hundred living u- living unit equivalents, but it almost doubles the size of the lift station.
When can we expect that to be complete, Legion Lift Station?
I'm sorry?
When can we expect the design to be complete?
Uh, we're at thirty percent. How old do you remember? In the springtime? So we ought to be having, so we'll hopefully bring it to the, to the council, um, for funding and, and the, for, for funding construction in nineteen?
If we can find the money.
Once you start construction, how long?
One year. Uh, well, eight, eight months, eight months to a year for construction.
So how long Burke Dale took?
Yes.
About a year?
Hope it early nineteen.
Okay. And I'm just curious, where does Shriner pump their students, since they can't use Legion? Are they, are they gonna have a lift station now?
They had to make a lift station to get them up to the next one.
Which is?
They're, they're pumping it into, um, Quinlan Lift Station Force Main. They're not pumping it into another lift station. They're actually pumping it right into a Force Main. And, uh, with, it's not something we would like to do very, uh, in, in general, private lift stations into a public Force Main. Um, but in effort to keep the university moving forward and, and giving, and trying to find efficiencies, that is what we've decided is, is their best method to, um, to kind of in this, a year, eighteen-month period, to get them serviced.
And would they, would it, is it just temporary, or will it always?
No, it's just temporary.
Okay, so once Legion gets done, we'll go back and re-pipe the way that wastewater flows?
As, as there, as a design element of their lift station, we require them to build it where the gravity system, once Legion's available, they won't have to do anything but take their lift station offline. The gravity system will, will dump into Legion Lift Station with, with minimal cost. It's just connecting the two pipes.
But it's not a minimal cost that they had to build this thing?
No, ma'am. It's, it's a significant cost that they're, that they're upfronting to, to build a lift station to tie into our Force Main.
And it's really based off the timing of the need that they desired it?
Right, right. They felt like they didn't have any choice.
That's right. The Jim Maxwell called this morning about it, and it was asking about more, um, development there, and, you know, and, uh, so we, we would really like to see what the game plan is for the next five or ten years to make sure that we're gonna, that we're building everything accordingly. And so he's gonna take that back to the, to the university and say, you know, the more, the more we have now, the better we'll be able to plan for the future. Instead of getting them annually, whatever the development's gonna be.
But Stuart, I, if you'll just make one last clarit- time point for me. I thought that we were at capacity. This says we have an additional ninety-five new homes or living units, uh, that, before we got to capacity. So that's a little different than what I think we were.
Depend, we have some capacity. We have ninety-five living unit equivalents that we can still pump to the lift station. For the, for the developments, those four that are listed there, they would have, they would have made our system, they would have exceeded our capacity. So for all intents and purposes, those we have, we don't have any, enough capacity to serve those.
And, and the Pinto in the spring, you said we do?
Well, right now, if they come in, if, if Pinto Trail comes in the way that they're, that they're proposing, and nobody comes in before them, then yes, we will have enough room for them. Uh, the Spring Street, we're still working on demands with them to figure out what, what their demand is gonna be and how that looks. But it looks like both of those, we would be able to serve both of those two through Legion. But that would, that would consume pretty close to what's left.
Stuart, what about needing to take Legion offline when it's under construction and adding capacity to it if these two were to come, you know, to fruition sooner rather than later? Is that, is that really a good idea, if we're gonna be taking it offline for construction?
Those are, those are s- such a small load that it, that'll be irrelevant to when we're, we're taking it offline. Yes, sir.
Let me go back a minute to the question of the university. You said you were looking to get their growth plans for the next five to seven years? Did I get that right?
I would like any growth plan that they would be willing to share with me. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and Stuart, this design that we're designing, that we're thirty percent of the way to designing, gets us to an eleven-point-four million gallon And, and Stuart, this design that we're designing, that we're thirty percent of the way to designing, gets us to eleven point four million gallons a day at Legion or what?
I will have to go back and verify that, that number. Kyle, do you remember off the top of your head? We can find that for you relatively easy. I just don't have it off the top of my head. I don't know what the, so, uh, so to give y'all some numbers and, and to see how fast the cost of these lift stations are going and Kyle will have to help me a little bit here. I'll put him on the spot. Burke Dale cost us about six million dollars? No, Burke Dale cost us about?
Burke Dale was six.
Six and then Jefferson cost? Four and a half, which it's a little smaller and this one's costing eight. And so, and that's just over the period of about five years? And this lift station will be relatively close to the size of Burke Dale.
We've seen some upward trends in construction costs here recently as well, um, with, uh, all of the hurricane damage that's occurred along the Gulf Coast. And so there have been a significant amount of, um, construction resources that have been dedicated to that area. So we are starting, working with our consultants. They're starting to see slightly rising costs, construction costs.
But that could change.
That could change, absolutely. But this is what we're anticipating right now.
Burke Dale was built at a time when, when the, there wasn't a whole lot of people working. Jefferson, on the other hand, was built when the oil field was booming and so the, the costs there real, or, or kind of see that in their, the cost of the projects. Okay. Nimitz Lake Volumetric Study, uh, there's a copy of this also as an appendices in your book. Um, council paid for a, a consult, or a Texas Water Development Board to actually go out and determine how much water was in the lake. We decided it was important to know what the volume of the lake was. It was permitted through TCUQ to hold eight, eight hundred and forty acre feet when it was built. Um, I couldn't find any documents as to the, the final survey as how much the, how much water it would impound. I'm assuming it's something less than eight hundred and forty, but it's relatively close to that. Went back in and did the study. Uh, we found out the lake in two thousand and fifteen is ninety-five acre feet and is, at, at that particular time was seven hundred and thirty-five acre feet of water stored in the lake. Um, every, every flood we have deposits a little bit or pulls a little bit out depending on the size of the flood. Typically it's deposited in the mouth of the river where it comes into the lake or right by the dam or it's washed out over the top of the dam. So that volume changes with every, with every flood event that we have. Um, they, they, they recommend that we do a study, um, as needed, basically if there's a big flood and we want to know how much capacity there is. Or every ten years, whatever, whatever happens first. Um, sludge, pulling sludge out of the lake is expensive. It's kind of like pudding. It doesn't, um, it doesn't come out in dirt. You have to find a place to store it, um, and, and let it dry out before you can really haul it. And so it's, it's a difficult process to get that, that stuff out of the bottom of your lake.
Have we ever, have we ever done that? Trained the lake and cleaned it?
We've cleaned around the water intake structure, uh, but not the whole lake. There's a lot of gravel up. You'll see the gravel if you go to lake outs or something, you'll see. I, I would think you could get some of that gravel out. I don't know where you go with it, but you could get some of that gravel out. The sediment is more down towards the dam itself, um, and we have cleaned that out before they dredged it before I was here. And they took it and that was the, the material that was kind of like a pudding. It, it doesn't stack very well. It doesn't do anything very well. It's, it's a mess. Um, but we did clean out front intake structure. Yes, ma'am.
So I had a conversation briefly yesterday and we talked about the, the loss of this hundred and five acre feet here. Uh, and I think he said, correct me if I'm wrong, that you can at times, uh, open the bottom area of the dam and at certain times when it's flowing, allow that to go to pass through. Is it?
No, no. The idea was that if you have a flood event, that you could get some whirlpooling action to scour some of that out of there, not necess, over the top.
Oh, over the top. That's what.
We do have, we do have two pipes in the bottom of the dam, um, but they, they come in, or it has to come into our intake structure before the, before you can let it through those pipes. So all your debris, you would be sucking into your intake structure before you let it through if you, if you use that, those lower pipes.
I noticed that on some of the, um, water permits, they depend on the lake being a certain number of, uh, a, a certain
Height.
Height, altitude above mean sea level. We don't ever come close, it doesn't look like, to that limit anyway, but theoretically, we, we measure that at the dam, right?
Yes.
And that's where the sediment's building up. So we just.
Yeah, the, depending on which permit you're looking at, some of them measure the top of the dam and some of them measure the old flow line of the river. So I, I don't know which one you're looking at, but yes, there are some, there are some elevations, uh, related to the, to the permits. There's also flow restrictions, um, those.
Those kick in sooner, I'm sure.
Yes. Okay, the TTHM, this is a, uh, an issue that we've been having for, uh, quite a few years now. And we've hired Freeza Nichols to do a, um, and a review for us and tell us, give us two of the most popular, techniques for getting rid of TTHM that are, that would be successful in our situations. And they've come up with the granular activated carbon and the chloramines. And we've listed here some of the pros and cons of both of those two. We'll go through them. The pros of the granular acta, color, carbon are high, highly effective removal of organic, uh, matters, including TTHM. So we filter it out. Basically it's a big charcoal filter, uh, that would require pumps and, um, some filter media that we would pump some of our water through to get the, to get the organic material out. Produces a very good tasting water. Um, it happens, the, just so happens that this is a, a method that a lot of people use underneath their sink. They run their water through a charcoal filter. Britta is, is similar to that. Uh, it produces a good tasting water. There's no adverse effect, uh, of the water to our ASR system. That's an important piece to us. Um, so we, we can store this water in our ASR system. Does not produce any potentially toxic byproducts. Uh, and we talk about chloramines in here and you'll see that's different. The drawback is, is that the cost is medium to high. It's going to be probably twice as much as the chloramines. Um, but that, we're, we're still working out those costs. We're, we're not ready to, to unveil, unveil that at this time. We're trying to hone in on the true cost of granular activated carbon. Chloramines, uh, it's, it's a significantly less cost is the, is the big pro there. Uh, however, it does have lots of cons associated with it. Um, maybe the, the biggest and most important in our mind is how it, how that water, um, reacts with our aquifer. Now, we've never put the, we never put ammonia in our aquifer to tell, and does it, does it, does it act like a clogging effect in the aquifer or does it, does it work just fine? We don't know the answer to that. It could be either one. Uh, I, I don't know how we'll test for that, but if council decides to go that way, we'll, we'll find a test for that before we, before we start that process. Um, production of, um, high hazardous harmful disinfection byproducts. Chloramine has byproducts just like chlorine gas does. Our chlorine gas has a TTHM and the chloramine has a different byproduct that is just now starting to be regulated by the EPA. And so we think we're just kicking the can down the road a little bit with chloramines, um, because we, we feel that they are going to start regulating that as well. Just, it's just not on their, on their immediate horizon. Taste and odor, uh, there is some taste and odor associated with chloramines. So in general, the way the chloramines work is that it's a, it's a mixture of chlorine gas and, um,
Ammonia.
Ammonia. You mix those two together and it's a weak solution. It's not near as hard and it's not as har, as harsh and so it doesn't build the TTHMs. But being that it's not as harsh, it allows bacteria to grow, algae to grow inside the pipes. Inside those pipes, when, when you, you have to kill that, that algae or bacteria once a year. When you do that, that's when you'll have that taste and odor concern. Um, then you have to flush, so you do it with high chlorine and you kill it all and then you flush out the lines before it gets to any, hopefully before it gets to any customers. You put it in there at a high dose, kill everything, open the fire hydrants, flush all that out and then you can go back with chloramines. In, in very rudimentary process or layman's terms, that's the way I, I understand how, how that works. So there is an increase in growth in the water demand due to the, the weaker disinfection. May have to bleed the system more often, uh, than what we do with chlorine gas, but, uh, and then the chlorine contact time may not be sufficient at the plant. Uh, we would have to do some homework and find out how long that chloramine has to, has to react with the water before we get it to our first customer and verify that there's enough time gap there. So we're working through those cons, uh, uh, pros and cons. And we hope to have, um, something, uh, uh, the, the presentation ready for, go to council in November, at the latest hopefully in December. So it'll be very soon so we can get this moving. TC, we are under an enforcement from TCUQ, or not enforcement. We're under an, an active, um, they're watching us. They haven't started enforcing on us yet, but they're, they're definitely watching what we're doing. So we need to be making progress. Yes, ma'am.
In the presentation, will you include, uh, if there is any on the activated carbon, uh, which idea I like? But the disposal, if you clear those, uh, I think there's some backwash there and you may have to dispose. So if there's any disposal cost landfill or anything, that'll be included, right?
Yes, yeah, the, and on the, we, we looked at, um, the operating cost, um, for both of them and right now the operating cost looks like about four hundred thousand dollars a year for the, for the granular activated carbon and about a hundred and nine, a hundred and eighty-seven, I think a hundred and ninety thousand for the, for the chloramine. So it, there it is. It's about twice as much for the, for the startup. Looks like it's going to be twice as much for the CIP and twice as much as the ongoing. But the benefit is you have, you, you don't have the water, it won't lock up in your ASR system. You know, we think we're going to have a lot better tasting water. Okay. Speaking of water. Get some before we start this slide.
Does anybody need a break? Is everybody okay?
Might be a good spot for one. Okay, ASR three. So for, for our ASR system to work, we have to have four components in place. You have to have a surface water right that you can pull out, that you can pull from. You also have, you have to have water that's available in the river. And then you have to have treatment capacity in excess of what you are going to serve to your customers. And then you also have to have an ASR well to put that in. So if you have all four of those components at any given time, or all, all at one time, then you have, then you can make, make our ASR system work. Um, ASR three, um, we, we do have that happening during a wet year. We have all, we have water rights as we saw early on in the presentation. We have some system capacity in the winter time of the year. Now, the, the water is flowing in the river and so we have the water available. And we, we actually had more treatment capacity than we had ASR storage. And so what we did is we decided, well, we'll build another, we'll build ASR three. So during those, excuse me, those windows, we'll be able to store this extra water in the ASR three. And so we moved forward with ASR three and we hired a contractor. He drilled the well. And we can get into any level of detail there that we want to, but in long story short, um, we, we ended up with a well that didn't work. It was some contractor error in, in our opinion. Um, and we ended up abandoning the hole. And, uh, we moved over and we, we contracted with another engineer to drill ASR three at the, um, kind of over where the future DPR plant was going to be. And so right now, ASR, when I say ASR three, there's two ASR threes. The one that's been abandoned, that, that went through the litigation and it, it is going to be a monitoring well. Uh, we allow headwaters to review it, uh, but we, we have no, no need or no use for it, um, production speaking. And then we're under contact with Hewitt Engineering to, to build ASR or to design ASR three, s, close to where the DPR plant would be. So the, so when we did, at that time, you know, we were, we were going through the, the, um, review with TCUQ for the DPR. We went to them and talked to them about our, uh, the, the, the sampling that we did. Had a meeting with them and TCUQ said, well, as of today, the way we see it, you do not need to store any of your DPR water. If you treat it to drinking water standards, you won't need to store it in an ASR well. You could put it directly into distribution if you wanted to. And that would, at that, that was the first we had heard of that. Up until this point, TCUQ said, if you do DPR, not only you have to treat it to DPR, you have to store it in ASR and then you can pull it out.
They said you have to store it in ASR?
Originally, that's what they said. The, the second time we went to them, they said, no, you don't have to do that anymore. Now, now you can use, when it comes out of your water treatment plant, it will be drinking water standards. So you can put it in your ASR or you can put it directly into distribution. It's up to the city.
So it is approved, uh, uh, for either, from the water, from the wastewater plant, but not from the pond?
From, um.
They tested the water coming out of the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, ma'am.
That was the plan we paid for, for a year.
Yes, ma'am.
And so now at this point, they have said, you can, with that water, just as it is coming out, you can either do the DPR, which is direct into your system, or you can store it in an ASR well.
Well, it'll still have to go through a water treatment process.
So it'd have to be pumped back to the water treatment plant?
No ma'am, it would be a separate water treatment.
There.
Ma'am, let me work through this whole thing and I, then I'll answer those, those particular questions because I think it'll shine some light on it. I, I know it's, I'm floundering around a little bit. It's, it's a, a lot of moving pieces with this DPR plant.
Sure.
Um, so at, at the second meeting with TCUQ, they said, either one, you can put it directly into distribution or you can store it in your ASR. We don't, you know, it, it's irrelevant to us. Once it comes out of the DPR plant, it's drinking water quality, do what you want. But the, the, at that meeting, the TCUQ had their direct well injection expert, which is basically their ASR. He said, if you do it in an ASR, the, the rules have changed. In the last two years, the rules have changed significantly. We're, we want you to go through a new permitting process with, with, with the ASR. And we, so that was a new component to us. So we haven't, we, we put that on hold and we, we just put that in our memory to think about and, and ponder as, as this process goes along. So right now DPR or ASR number three, we, we told John Hewitt, let's wait and see if we're going to build a DPR plant. If we are going to build it, we should put the ASR well close to that. If we're not going to build it, maybe we, we move it somewhere else. Um, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. So ASR three, A, I'll call it, has failed. We're not using it. It is a monitor well. ASR three B, which we should probably call four, is on hold until we decide what we're going to do with DPR.
Is the old, so the headwaters is going to monitor that well, old ASR three? Because I thought they were.
We monitor it ourselves and then we submit, we submit all of our data to headwaters. So in, in a roundabout way, yes, sir, they can, they can have, they, they're getting the data. Yes, ma'am.
So let me just be clear because Mr. Hewitt told me a long time ago that he had done the plans and turned them in. He had designed the plans.
He, he has plans very similar to our Methodist encampment well. And what she designed that and that's an ASR well as well. Um, it's actually a groundwater well, but it was designed to be an ASR well. And so we've told them we're on hold until we decide if we're moving forward with the, with the DPR or not. But he has been working, he, he was hired to, to build plans, to design, to draw plans. Yes, ma'am.
Which he said he did. Okay.
Yes. Okay. So we'll talk about direct potable reuse. Or is there any more questions about ASR? Hopefully, hopefully DPR will help clean up some of the ASR questions as well. Okay. So the city, um, developed DPR plant to supplement the city's potable water sources during the, during the drought of record. We go back to the, to the slide where you remember surface water, groundwater and so on. Uh, during a drought of record, we, um, this, this, we felt in the past that the city didn't have enough water. Our regional, region J plan, um, does not take into account our surface water because it is so junior. Uh, and they, they show us as a deficit in the future for water. And so we've always looking for water supplies. Um, we went through a, a process, um, to kind of identify where we, where we think we were going to get more water. And DPR looked like a good source at that particular time. It was during a time of drought. And so we, we, uh, said, well, let's, let's kind of run down this, run down this trail a little ways and see how we're, if, if this is going to be a viable option. Uh, we decided to use the existing DPR facilities as our example and, and places in California, El Paso and Big Springs. Uh, we would potentially build a plant that was a half a million to one million gallons, uh, a, a day to have potable water. Go behind our wastewater plant. And then we earmarked about five million dollars or we earmarked exactly five million dollars in two thousand and seventeen construction to build that plant. Twenty-seven. So where we're at in the current status of that is we have, um, obviously we're building the reused pond. Uh, that, that's aside from the, the DPR plant, but that's a component of it. We needed some of the, some, um, time for the water or we needed a volume of water for us to treat. The pond's going to work for that. Uh, we did the initial sampling for TCUQ to come. And we did the initial sampling for TCAQ to make sure that our water's of quality, that we can treat it to drinking water standards, and make it safe for everybody to drink. We've done that, we've given that back to TCAQ. That was the second meeting that we talked about, that we met. We have looked at the different treatment types, which we'll talk about here in a minute. And we've, we met with TCAQ, and on general, either one of these two treatment types are acceptable to them. So we're ready to, we're ready to move forward if the, if so desired. Right now, we're trying to decide, do we want to move forward with the studies? And do the preliminary testing to build a DPR plant? Or do we want to wait for some sort of trigger, maybe another drought, or whatever that trigger might be, to move forward with the development of DPR? So moving forward, what that would look like for the city? We think from where we are today, to getting an active DPR plant, is about a five-year plan. We would, first of all, we'd have to determine which kind of plant we want. Reverse osmosis, or the two that we've narrowed down, which, the number one there, reverse osmosis, is by far and away the most popular. However, there are some, there's some tailing water that comes out of the waste, out of the waste stream of a reverse osmosis plant that may be hard to discharge, or hard to find a place to put it. Ozone and biological filtration train, looks like it would probably be the best suit for the city, or the best path forward. But we would, we would want, we need to decide what method best suits the council and the city. After we decide on that, we'll take that to the regulatory authority. We've already done that to some degree. We've got both of those two processes approved by the state, and they are, they are willing to work with us on either one of them. The public coordination of storing this water, do we want to treat it and store it in ASR? Or do we want to put it directly into the distribution system? That's a policy question that we would have to answer. So as we move forward, our first true next step, other than educating the public, would be doing some desktop testing of whatever treatment type we decide we want to use. If it's the biological filtration, we would build a little, little plant that just sits on the table, and we can actually work through it and try to make it, and make sure it all works. You do that for about three months, and you give it to TCAQ, and they test your, they test your water and look at all your results. And they're able to say, it's good, or no, it's not, or we need more information, or whatever the case may be. Once you get through the desktop portion of it, then you go to a pilot study. And that would be something that would happen outside, that may be, maybe 100,000 gallons a day, or something of that. It would be, be a lot bigger plant, and you would kind of ramp it up and make sure that what your desktop study showed, you can still scale it up, and it's still successful at a scaled-up model. And then you submit that to TCAQ for review, which will take around three to six months for them to do that study, or their review. Then we, during that process, we'll develop the monitoring and operational plan, and it will have the probable cost and the unit water cost. After all that, the application for approval, we get that from TCAQ. At that time, we can start designing our plant. We can design the potable plant with TCAQ's blessing, and then we can start construction. So we think, from when we pull the trigger, it could be anywhere, depending on how long it takes us to get through there, anywhere from three to five years. So future, future water policy questions for the city of Kerrville? When we started, ever since I've worked for the city, we've always been looking for water. They've wanted to look for different sources of water. Can we go to wellfield in West Kirk County? Should we go pipe water in from Canyon Lake? Should we pipe water in from Lake Amistad? Where is the next source of water gonna come from? And so we, you know, obviously, I'm not the first one to look at that. ASR was designed by UGRA originally, and they, we looked at it again in this process and said, is this a good source of water, a secure source of water for the city, long-term? There we go, we look at those four components. Do we have the water rights to do it? Yes, we have water rights on paper. But do we have the wet stuff? When it's really critical, are we gonna have water to put downhole? Without getting the subordination agreements from GBRA, we felt that it was not beneficial to invest that much money and time in those water rights, because it was a take-or-pay with GBRA. And you have to have that to be secure, to have a senior water right. And so we, we looked at, we looked at that and said, well, ASR may not be, it's probably one of the best options around, when you look at it from globally, of getting water from these lakes or a remote wellfield. But how reliable is it? We felt that the reliability for the cost wasn't there.
Stuart, are there numbers we could look at that, a subordination agreement, a sort of a...
I can get you the numbers.
A sample?
It's $140 an acre foot right now for GBRA water. And an acre foot is 351,000 gallons. Three hundred and twenty-five.
And we have to pay for it whether we use it or not? And most years, we won't use it.
Yeah, and this kind of gets to the last item on this page that he's gonna get to, that's kind of a path forward to be looking at some of that.
And it has to be available. Because even if you have it, even if you have it with them...
And you've paid for it all these years.
And you've paid for it, that's right.
If the river's low, you don't get it.
That's right. We don't, the wet, even with the subordination agreement, they won't guarantee the water's available.
Can't.
So then we looked at expanding our groundwater production. What did that look like? Was it a, was it a remote wellfield out in West Kirk County? Additional wells here in the city, contracting with landowners for their, for their water rights of that 80 acre feet, or excuse me, 80,000 gallons per acre. What did that look like? And did we feel that that water was really available to us when we needed it? We think offsite would probably be better, because right now, we have, we have our groundwater wells here. But being diversified away from the immediate aquifer under the city may be a good idea. So we continued to look, and we looked at developing the potable reuse. We felt as long as the city had water, we were pumping groundwater, or surface water, or whatever, ASR water, whatever we had, we were gonna have water coming out of our wastewater plant. In a worst-case scenario, if you have water, you're gonna have some, you're gonna have some reuse water. So we've moved forward with the direct potable reuse. We're to a point right now, we have a new council, and we're, maybe it's time to look at that, those processes again. So maybe we authorize the development of a long-waged water plant, to look at some of those again and re-up that. But that gives you the history of how we got to where we are today, and then maybe our path forward is to, to look at that again.
So the last item there, the hire team of attorneys and engineers to look at our water needs and options. It's not uncommon for cities alone, outside of, you know, your region plans, our Region J plan, to look at much longer time horizon. You know, Dallas, it was 100 years out. So, you know, the thought is that with an attorney on the lead, looking at water rights, in particular, in some of the legal questions around water, then they hire the appropriate engineers as part of that study, or that, that look at what the possibilities and options are. And it's not gonna be just incredibly costly, but it'll, it'll, it won't be inexpensive. And so right now, we're entertaining some proposals from one of the major law firms here in Texas to do that for us. Mike's been in contact with them, and as well as myself and Ian and Stuart. So when we get that back, I'll be bringing that back to you all for further discussion and consideration about taking a fresh look at what all of our options might be, including all the things that he mentioned and possibly others.
What's the best guess as to when that might be? Just a guess?
Mike, what's the latest we're hearing from them?
I haven't heard anything. I know she's reached out to a couple, three or four engineering firms. If I don't hear anything about the end of the week, I'll...
So next 30 to 60 days, I would imagine.
Next 30 to 60 days, okay.
And as a, as a thought, and aside to that, too, I think it's really critical, because I had wanted for two years to form a committee, you know, that did nothing but work with the details of this going, these different options going forward, a community group. And I think what we decided was to use the group and the comprehensive plan that comes out of the comprehensive plan to get on that. Because I know that we're anticipating appointing members to that particular subcommittee. And I think, as we all believe, it should be members that are sitting here in this room, that need to take part in that, as a regional water plan. So there's some interesting things in here that you'll find. These are people, and I was totally unfamiliar with this, that we had actually, formulated a list of people that owned private, had private water ownership rights, that we list here in order of seniority and volume. And so I never had been privy to the fact that we may or may not have dealt with private landowners to acquire. It's one of the options that Stuart mentioned for part of our future water supply as well. So I'm hoping that out of the comprehensive plan, we'll have some good constructive ideas to go with that as well.
Well, wasn't it the point of the earliest survey was to go actually research how viable the option was to go obtain water rights from the comprehensive?
Yeah. So the subcommittee for the comprehensive plan related to water and infrastructure, they probably are only gonna meet within the context of the comprehensive planning effort, maybe three times is what we're kind of budgeting in terms of time. So all these subcommittees, in a very short window, will only be meeting around three times. It may be that you all, if you want that kind of public input, that you have, we talked about it before at your retreat, and since then, a water policy committee, okay? So kind of, you know, the evolution of, you know, this whole look at the water issues and, and from the committees that perhaps you've had in the past, that there would be this new water policy committee that looks at all things water, not just one component of water.
Right.
So...
I think it's critical.
So any further questions from the council? I know we covered a lot of territory here, and, you know, lots of information shared. So be happy to take any of your questions.
I got a couple that are sort of unrelated to each other. But on the TTHM, you know, it's obviously been something that's been worked on for a while. So what's, why should we feel particularly confident that this latest solution that we choose is going to solve it as opposed to what we've been doing so far?
We looked, the first couple looks at the TTHM, what we did is try to find any low-hanging fruit, any inexpensive methods that we can do to fix the TTHM problems. And we tried a few of them. I mean, we, when we say inexpensive, we spent $300,000 on some air scour systems that we put in the tank. And that was the most expensive thing that we tried. We tried some things at the plant. We tried putting granular activated carbon in the filter, just free-floating in the filter, thinking it would soak some of that up. We were looking for something inexpensive, you know, we, and it just didn't, it just doesn't exist.
So the prior ones weren't really designed to fix it? They were just sort of putting a Band-Aid on it for a while? And this particular option is hopefully going to be designed to fix it?
These, these options have been proven to fix the problem, yes, sir.
Okay. And the other, the other question is more, more of a policy question. But if the four sources, you know, are raw water sources, you know, what do you got? Groundwater, surface water, ASR, and reuse water? If those are all our sources, help me understand the logic behind, and I understand it's a policy decision made by council, but help me understand, if those are the sources of water, why we would have an inconsistent sort of use policy between those? Such as, we, we attempt to, we add a cost premium, a volume premium to groundwater and surface water, but we actually add a volume discount to reuse water? Is there, is there a logical reason to separate those sources from each other? I mean, reuse water is technically, as a source, is gonna be sourcing DPR, right? That's really what we're saying, right?
Yes, sir.
So it's similar to river water. So shouldn't we, in your opinion, as everything water in the city, shouldn't we sort of keep those as a consistent incentive as far as use goes? You know what I'm asking?
I don't understand the cost relationship.
Well, he's, he's getting a similar source, as all sources of water, why shouldn't we be handling it the same in terms of the way you're pricing?
With the same basic structure, yeah. I mean, because we're incentivizing low-volume use of a source. Why not do that across the board?
And it comes down to what you mentioned a moment ago, it's a policy issue. And cities oftentimes will structure rates where, you know, different classes are subsidized for whatever reason. But it's all one system, and so how you price it out could be a multitude of ways.
Right, but if it's all really part of the same pool of source, why, I'm, it's, why would we do that?
I'll just answer why I voted in favor of it. It's because the people who are gonna use the reuse water have to make a significant investment. They have to build a retention pond. But it's to the city's advantage to get them on reuse water. And so as a carrot, we give them this very advantageous price per gallon. That helps them justify the cost of the new infrastructure they have to support.
It wasn't actually my question, though. See, I actually am not talking about...
Oh, well, that, I thought you wondered what the policy thinking was.
I'm suggesting that they're all four sources of water, that all have to be processed to get used. And so, under a water conservation society, which is really what we're in, why would we peel off any one of those sources? Like, it'd be kind of like, we wanna, we're short on surface water, and we wanna, we wanna guard that, but not groundwater. They're both sources of water.
And in a perfect world, I, you know, they should all be exactly the same. But as we get toward that, that ideal situation, there may be some...
Okay, well, yeah. I asked the question to raise the issue, because I don't think that sufficiently answered my question. You're not the one that's gonna answer it. I'm sorry if I asked it in the wrong place. It'd be the policy of the council, but that's the issue to raise.
Is it, is it this tiered rate structure that you're questioning?
No, no, it's actually, we're talking, basically, the source of water that comes to my house...
Yes, sir.
Might be groundwater, might be surface water, but it's potable water that I'm gonna be paying for, right? DPR, in particular, is possibly gonna come to my house as drinking water.
Yes, sir.
The source, the root source of that is the reuse water, okay? So to me, pricing of the reuse water sales is the same as pricing for the groundwater, because it's all ultimately a source for drinking water. So when we're trying to conserve drinking water, that's what I'm talking about.
Right.
Any other questions or...
Any questions from the public? We have guests out there. You're welcome to have, see the rainwater man out there.
The appendices there, did you have any questions about all the different appendices? There's quite a few of them, yes, ma'am?
It says that our research about the needs of the Peterson Farm Road development...
Which one are you on? Peterson Farm Road one, obviously.
Peterson Farm Road is, I think, the first one, the appendix for the Legion decision. It assumes a water usage of 190 gallons per capita. I wonder if that isn't a great deal more than what people are currently using in Kerrville?
That's our design standard.
Yeah, I can see that. But realistically, aren't we, aren't we hoping for year-round conservation that brings that number down? And how does it compare with current usage of existing customers? Do we know that? We can find that.
Yeah, we would, we'd have to, we'd have to research that. But that, that's our design standard.
On headwaters, we used to, you know, we used to say, the goal for Texas ought to be 100 gallons per person per day, including all uses, including irrigation, so that it presupposes a real conservation-minded population.
Stuart, I'm sorry, did you...
That's enough, thank you.
What is the difference in cost, or do we know, in processing? I know all you do for the groundwater is basically chlorinate. And so... And so obviously the higher cost of treatment is the river water. And so I know we mix some of that, some of it we use membranes. But what, what is the difference? Is there a tremendous difference in cost? And if so, is there a possibility of increasing the rights, you know, groundwater? I know that's limited and I know Mary Ellen would know best probably of those.
And then you've got, you've got transmission costs. You know, if you do a remote well field, you've got to bring the water from where, and, and out in West Texas, we know those aquifers are bountiful.
Well, if they're back.
Wonderful, wonderful water. And it, it follows the drought cycle too, but.
That was my second part of the question.
Not as quickly as the river.
And, and it, not as quickly, but it is affected some. And so, but the three tiered, three parts of that question, the cost to get it and the, what was it? Now you, now I lost the train of thought. But the availability, what would be the possibility of increased allowables there? And then your transmission.
So. That's what I bet would come out of this study we're talking about.
Looking at all the options.
Yeah, okay.
That's why you have an engineering component.
Okay.
And I'm glad that you brought up conservation because I think that there's a lot more that we could be doing in that arena. And setting the example, I know that we've been talking with Ray about some demonstration projects for rainwater harvesting. You know, we need to be looking at landscaping and a number of things. So it's something I've asked Stuart and Scott to bring forward a program. A lot of cities do rebates for toilets and lots of things, you know, low-flow toilets. So that it's, you know, you get the public education awareness going on about that. And it had a phenomenal impact on usage in Dallas, for example, just through some of our programs. I guess also looking at your irrigation systems and inspecting those and doing consulting, consulting with companies about ways they can reduce their usage. So I think there's more to be done in that area. And in the scheme of things, you know, it's, it's not the answer, but it, it's, it's part of what we should be doing as a city to be looking at more.
And it's low hanging fruit.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's inexpensive, all things considered. The Kendall County already restricts the planting of San Augustine grass in new construction. Because it's just to water thirsty.
There's one home, there's one home that, a person we spoke to in Comanche that's like five hundred dollars a month on
Good.
Water to water the landscaping. However, the other side of that is you've got to figure out how it's going to affect your income.
Well, right, right, right.
When you sell on your sales.
Right, you've got to, you've got to figure out what it, what your minimum is.
To your budget.
I can't share with you the numbers right now of the cost of groundwater versus surface water treatment. But out of the ground, when we have a groundwater well, all we do is pump it out of the ground, chlorinate it and put it into the system.
Right.
And so that, it's a very minimal cost when you compare it to the, the building of your treatment plant, your operators, your ongoing maintenance twenty-four hours a day. You still have to chlorinate that water, so it's, it's significantly less. And we did look at a remote well filled out in West Kirk County. And there was, there was some concern there that that's where the springs of the river are. Is it going to have any impact on the river? Because now as, as we move along in our, in our understanding of groundwater, we understand that groundwater is what is eventually surface water. Um, and what are the, and what are the implications of that?
By no means, by no means is somebody pumping eighty thousand gallons of water for every acre in this county. Oh, no.
Oh, yeah.
No, by no means. So if we suddenly started doing that, it'd probably have a big impact on the river.
What, how much impact would it have if we could get folks to put a rainwater, a significantly sized rainwater barrel at their house and use that water off of their roof?
If, you know, we know that, don't we still know, Stuart, that our, that our usage doubles between December and January and July? So we know that half of that big increase is accounted for by irrigation. People would use
Yeah.
Rainwater for that? Oh, wow.
Yeah, the problem is that.
Then we could be pumping into the ASR system all year round.
When you need to be using that water is when it's not raining, right? So the water's not there.
Well, you've got to have storage.
Well, if you, if you had some appropriately sized storage facilities that were not offensive to somebody.
And another thing that we talked about, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And there's a lot of places where you could do that, I think.
Riverside Nature Center could give us some good data.
About two cents, I don't know if y'all want to hear it.
Sure. Step to the platform.
I'm Barry Wall, I'm Rainwater Systems and Solar.
If you'd step to the platform so that they're recording.
I wasn't planning on coming up here today, Bonnie. I'm Barry Wall with Rainwater Systems and I can give you two or three things that would really help. Discounting everybody else in the United States. The number one thing I do not understand is why we don't all consider solar hot water heating. Uh, I just said that wrong. It's solar water heating is correct, is the correct terminology. That's got the greatest, quickest return on investment in any solar product in the world. And it's the biggest water-saving device that's out there right now, except for low-flow toilets. If you can find a real low-flow toilet that works right, those guys down in Bear Canyon have got one. But those two things and of course the low, the, the shower heads and things like that. Those three things would save a tremendous amount of drinking water. Because that's what we're concerned with is drinking water. We don't need electricity to live, but we have to have water. Uh, on the other side, you were talking about using water for irrigation. It, it, there's prob, problematic parts of that. Uh, one of the things is, is what are you trying to water? Small gardens are easy to do, but if you're talking about taking care of a whole lawn, that's really hard to do. And a good example is of that, in order to take care of a property the size of this building, you, you would have to have the size of this building to be able to catch that much water to take care of those things. Any little bit that you do will always help. One of the, one of the problematic problems is a lot of residences don't have enough property to put a, a tank large enough to put it on there. Uh, I know a lot of times we put them underground, especially in city dwellers, we'll put them underneath the driveway to get them to the size they need to go. But most of those people don't want to put that good water on their lawn. They want to put that good water in their house because it's, it's almost pure water. There's very little treatment to do to it. But there are two or three things, just like I mentioned a minute ago, that we could do as a city, as a county, as a, as people in general here in the United States. And that one thing is just going to solar water heating would, would take a, a huge amount. You can just think about how long you have to turn on the water in the shower in the morning before it gets hot. Will you save all that? Because if you've got solar hot water heating, it's going to come direct straight in and those can be plumbed in as, as things go on. And you can retrofit too, to do those. I'd be happy to answer questions for you folks about rainwater, anything. I, I will tell you this, y'all were talking about, was it a hundred and eighty gallons per person? Is that what I heard a minute ago?
Hundred and ninety.
Hundred and ninety? Well, I size systems at fifty gallons per person per day for a hundred and eighty days. So for a two-person household, it's twenty thousand gallon standing. Once it's full, the chances mathematically of them ever running out is as close to zero as we can get them. And everybody to date, and currently I've, I've installed a little over seven hundred and fifty rainwater installs. Uh, all the people I've got on full drinking water systems, I've never had anybody run out that has the proper sized storage tank. I got a lot of people that'll say, oh, I don't need twenty thousand gallons, I'll put in ten. And it's odd, I've gone back and put in another ten thousand gallons for them of storage. But be happy to answer questions.
Is that for irrigation or just?
Potable, potable and irrigation.
And irrigation.
Fifty gallons per day per person.
Fifty, includes irrigation?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow.
I'm one of those guys that takes a shower with two gallons. I'm, I'm good at it.
There it is.
Yes, sir. We, we try to cheat that up a little bit depending on what they're trying to irrigate too. But I tell you what, if we really got in a bad drought, a really bad one, that none of us in this room have ever really seen a really bad one, they forget about putting water on that plant and they'll put it in them real fast.
And I know you said before when we spoke that it takes a lot of, you know, surface area to, to drain.
Yeah, to do irrigation it does. It doesn't take much to, to, to supply the house. A, a, a regular two thousand square foot house for two people's plenty to get the job done.
I was thinking for the city in particular. I don't know what all we irrigate with potable water in our park system. I, do we? Uh, in the park in Louis Hayes?
Yeah, and Ray just asked me about, the other day about the new baseball field. And I said, I don't think there's a big enough building in there. I drove by and sure enough, there is. So there's a lot that we can do out there. Thank y'all very much.
Good idea, thank you.
So we, we do have some irrigation within the city limits, mainly at the ball fields and some of the sports complex. But residential irrigation is a, is a big component of ours. I mean, that is where the lion's share is. Also, right now in our potable water system, Ashriner University, so they, they, they also water some of their facility out there as well.
The fields, the playing fields.
Playing field, well, and within their campus as well.
Yeah. What, Stuart, when, when you get on the Fries and Nichols study, the Peterson Farm Road, at the, at the end of that report, there's a lot of price estimates. And there's a thing called mobilization, E O and P. What do those mean?
Overhead profit.
Engineering.
Probably engineering.
Yeah, engineering operations and, and what does mobilization mean?
That's the contractor moving onsite, moving on.
So we're, all of these things are assumed to be contractor done, not any of them done in-house. The one for the lift station specifies the contractor, O and P and contingency, so that was my confusion.
And between those three reports, so you see three different kinds of reports. The very, I think. So the Peterson Farm Road is the most in detail study. If a customer comes along and says, I want to build a subdivision and we want a, a water analysis report. And if it doesn't work, what do we have to do to fix the city system? That is a, that is what that report would look like. The next one is the East Main that just says a quantity. Say, well, can we, can we build this system, will it work or not? That is a, a different level of reporting that we do. And then the last one is the Cinderella Ridge and it's even a lesser, it's a lot more inexpensive, but it just tells them the volumes at those manholes, what that manhole can handle. So you'll, you see three different.
I'm not sure I've got Cinderella.
It should be just an aerial picture.
Oh, it's just a map.
And then obviously the cost is, is according to the, to the level of effort that's put into that. Mayor, to follow up on your last question of transmission line, you know, how much may it cost to build a remote well field? Where's, we would think that the pipeline would cost what we see in town, seventy dollars a foot. So that's about three hundred and, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a mile. And you move that out to West Kirk County, then you have to build the wells. And then you also have to contract for the surface, uh, the, the surface rights out there to, to, to make that viable. So the cost goes up. I mean, it, it, you don't have to look real deep to see that the cost is very expensive the further you get away from town.
Well, and you'd have to buy the property rights.
Uh, well, either contract with the owner or, or purchase, I'm guessing.
To, going back to the water catchment systems. And when I first got here, the zoning approval instruments for both, I believe Lowe's and Home Depot included, that they're supposed to be operating a rainwater catchment on their property. So keep in mind that that's been part of zoning.
Is that, yeah. That we're already doing, which is cool.
Did they do that?
As far as I know, that, that was in the zoning organs and I think that was part of the approval process, maybe.
I think the hospital does, right?
The hospital takes condensate off their air conditioner, it's not rainwater.
I consider our rainwater catchment, Nimitz Lake, because as, as you look at it from, from a city as a whole, I mean, everything runs into the lake and that's where, and we have a potable water plant at the edge of the lake. And so you're treating that water.
But I can't get it back to water my grass.
Well, sure you can, we'll bring it to you.
I wanted, I wondered, when, when I was on the groundwater conservation district, we talked a lot about the market for water rights, Ray, but there wasn't a lot of historical data in Kirk County of people buying and selling water rights. Has that changed?
Soliciting, purchase, I think Stuart did as well.
That's right.
I don't think we had a, a good return on that.
No, sir.
Well, then what are you going to pay?
So we, we don't know what the going rate would be.
No, the, the going rate is what you're trying to pay.
We, in that report that you have, in the Region J report, it kind of gives an idea. UGRA and the city worked together to, with our consultant to say, we need something. If somebody comes to us, what, give us a pulse, what can we look at? They developed that report, that report has numbers in it. It's a, it's an interesting report to read, but they're, all of the water rights are listed up north of Canyon, we'll say north, this side of Canyon Lake, the quantities of them, the historical priority date of them. And then also what they think the cost might be. But Ray's exactly right. It's whatever they'll sell it for is what you're going to have to pay for.
So maybe we just divide up that list among us and we start cold calling?
Start calling people.
We've, we've both done that within our agencies.
There's other issues as well, Stuart certainly addressed those, change of permit, diversion point, change of mist control, those type of things.
Right. Yeah, when, the, the last water right that we purchased was from Center Point, it was a fifty-four acre feet. Yeah, we paid thirty-eight thousand dollars for it. It cost us forty-five thousand dollars by the time we did the engineering and the legal fees to have it move up here. And we probably lost twenty to thirty percent of the, of the right in the, in the process.
And again, it's just paper money.
And then again, it, it may or may not be available during the drought, depending on how, that one wasn't that old.
Any other questions, comments by council? Good presentation, I think it helped to, with an overview here and we'll absolutely need to make some decisions going forward with the policy that we developed. So thank you all for coming. If there's no further questions or comments, then in eleven forty-six, we shall adjourn.